December two thousand and sixteen, and the time is five thirty-five. You call the row please.
Councilmember Moran?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Here.
Councilmember Erskine?
Here.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Certified posting?
I certify that the agenda has been posted in accordance to the open meeting act.
Okay, thank you. We will all stand as we have the pledge and then the nation of America. Anderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our all.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening and to discuss matters concerning our city. We pray, Father, that you allow this meeting to go according to your will and that all things be done decently and over a force in Jesus' name we pray and ask you all, amen.
Amen. We now have citizens' input, and as a reminder, when you come to do citizens' input, please state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to address an issue related to some city business. I have one citizens' input, Lisa and Mike Lerman.
What is that?
It is a copy of the penal code.
Oh, okay, that really should have been handed out first.
Oh.
And we'll see that they get it, though.
Okay.
My name is Lisa and this is Mike Lerman. We own and operate Rent-A-Stuff here at Marlin. We're here to just inform the council of our growing problem that has continued for several months, well, about a year. We had met with Mr. Fletcher over the police department on handling our theft cases. We have cases that are over a year old that are not being handled. Mr. Fletcher had run up to the police department for the jobs not being done, and since he's left, they have gone back down to the wayside. They are not being taken care of. In fact, the condition has gotten worse. Now that they talk to our customers, they're informing our customers that they do not need to worry about it, that they're not going to do anything, and just to ignore our phone calls and procedures, so. And we just wanted to come here tonight to let you know of the ongoing problem, and if it doesn't change, we're going to have to contact an attorney and pursue the city and the police department for damages to our company. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, today, and council, I would ask please for your cooperation here that we stick to our council rules and parliamentary procedure. Please be identified or be recognized by the chair as you speak, and make sure that everyone gets to speak. I'm going to call on each person, limit your remarks to what we'll be discussing at that particular time, and if you have other questions, we'll go back around, so everybody gets to speak. One other thing, because we have individuals here that have traveled afar to get here and will need to get back home. We will take up six, seven, and eight. We'll move number twelve up under eight, and then do nine, ten, and their own. Okay, Mr. Ewan.
Thank you, Mayor. Number six, is discussed, considered about resolution to designate authorized signatories for the twenty sixteen Texas CDBG program contract seven-two-one-six-three-one-nine, actually relating to your dam, your life. Number seven is also, and eight is also related, there are required documents that should be concerning CDBG civil rights policies and proclaiming fair housing laws. Janice Southwork with Grant Works is here tonight to answer any of your specific questions concerning the, because it's pretty routine on Grant projects, but this is taking some questions for Janice.
Janice, would you like to come on? I believe we've done this before.
Oh, I'd say so, definitely, a few times. These are standard resolutions that have to do with CDBG program contract seven-two-one-six-three-one-nine. This is for the dam project, and that is spelled D-A-M, and we, these are just standard resolutions that we do for each CDBG project or any other type of project that you have that has to do with Texas Department of Agriculture. They're all very standard. If you have any questions regarding the content of them.
Okay. Shall we take, we have to take these one at a time, do we not? We have them here.
Yes, they're separate. I don't want to set these.
One at a time?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. What is the desire of the council on number six? This is the alternative signatory for the CDBG contract.
May I make a motion to accept the CDBG program contract seven-two-one-six-three-one-nine?
Okay. A motion has been made, is there a second?
Okay, motion has been made and has been seconded.
Further discussion? Questions? Seeing none, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seven, resolution requiring CDBG civil rights policies.
Yeah, may I make a motion to accept the CDBG civil rights policies, standing?
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
The second one. Ms. Moran, second. Further discussion? Seeing none, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number eight, proclaiming April as fair housing month. What is wish of the council?
Do again, ma'am. Proclaiming April as fair housing month?
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. And I think that Texas here is busy.
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm there.
We're going to take up number twelve.
Discussing that appropriate action is necessary, and final plan is to spec the downtown renovation project. This is your sidewalk project on Harriet Street on the Little River Theater. Ginger Hoffman and Taylor and Associates are going to be here to review specific placements concerning the grant, the project process. Can tell you that once you approve the plan and spec, we'll have the engineer begin advertising for bidding. We'll have to advertise, I think, at least two weeks in the local papers, and then they'll post it out on the website for a contractor to bid. I'm not sure if it'd be possible we would have bidders buy the next council bid within a month or not, but at least in February, you should be able to afford a contract, and then they can proceed with work, perhaps, if they accept that. That'd be great if we could get them in and get the work done before the theater starts their program in May, I think, when they have their next planned program. Do you have any specific questions that I can answer, or the gender can answer?
Yes, my understanding was that you had by statement to start the project by February? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. This is two-year project. You can go a little, you can go a little beyond with documentation, but the project currently is on schedule, and you're moving right along, and it's our job at Taylor and Associates to work with the engineers and make sure that we have each milestone, you know, on schedule. So they are ready to go to bid, you know, if the plans have been submitted.
So basically, what do we need to do tonight?
Tonight, basically, once the city approves the plans, the engineer will coordinate, they'll coordinate the bidding. And once the bids are received, the recommendation is made by the engineer on the award to the best or the lowest bidder. After a council approves the award, the engineer completes the contract, and then a pre-construction conference is set up with a contractor, someone from the city, and Gary Taylor and Associates. There's no further action by the council necessary after the award is made.
All right.
Tonight, we just need to approve the plan and spec so we can proceed with the project.
Okay.
I know they've submitted the plan and spec for that, and you and I, you see.
Can I say?
Yeah, they've redone, this is the second set of plans that I've seen, they had to make some adjustments, actually add some details on some of the ADA requirements that were not on the original set of plans.
So they had to put them on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What is the desire of the council?
There, I know that we agreed and approved the final plan for downtown renovation project.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
Motion has been made and has been seconded. Okay, questions?
Yes, I have a question on this. Does this include Commerce Sidewalk Two, which was supposed to be in on this grant?
Alternates there on the corner, down, one block down, that next street, there by the city shop, that next corner down Commerce, it's not the sidewalk, but the ramps on those four corners. Those are listed as alternates one and two, so that we can get a bidding and see that the bids are within the grants, and we can include those, either the north two corners and the south two, depending on the bid.
Okay, all of that was supposed to have been included in this?
It's included as alternates.
But that doesn't mean that it'll get fixed.
It depends on the bids. If the bids are within the project, include those, we can include that, yes. It's a little secret, I'll give you some levers on whether or not we have enough money to do the project.
Well, see, that's what I was speaking of, that was supposed to have been included, when we were making the arrangements to do this, to do these sidewalks and things, that was supposed to have been included, not just Heritage Road, you know, around that, to fix that sidewalk, because it's in worse shape than down there, Heritage Road, but it was omitted when it was, when the grant was sent in, that's the problem.
Just pick the intersection down, the ramp, handicap ramps.
So it's left out of this, out of the grant, it will not be put in there?
The sidewalk on Commerce is not included.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, that's all I wanted to know. It's not included, but it was supposed to be, I bet it could.
Mr. Porter, did you have a question?
No, ma'am, it's pretty straightforward.
Ms. Moran? No, I understand. Ms. Moore?
I just want to clear up, you say we're going to, the engineer will be conducting the, which engineer?
The engineer that you have procured, who is KSA?
So they will be orchestrating his process?
Yes, and we will be following up to make sure that we have all the right forms in a timely manner to make sure we get all the right milestones.
Okay, is KSA bidding?
They will be putting out the bids for contractors.
So they will not be bidding for the job?
They are your engineer, they are the engineer of record on this job, so they will be assisting us with putting out bids for contractors to help me build the project.
Thank you. Henderson, thank you.
Yes, I might know, just for clarification, you're saying the ramps themselves are included, but the sidewalk is not?
On Commerce, on the south side of Commerce Street, that's right. The sidewalk on Harriet.
Kind of, give me a, you said something about which sides of the street were you including? Was it, you said the north and the south sides, or?
Speaking of the intersection down on Commerce, one block south of Bible, Wood Street.
Right.
There's four corners there that tied in, there's either no ramps or on the north, maybe the northwest side, and then adequate ramp, where they're putting adequate handicap ramps.
You're putting them on both sides, or?
Yes, sir, that's where, this is the intersection that I was talking about that is listed for bidding purposes as alternates. Alternate, alternate one will be the north two corners, by the pavilion on that side. Alternate two will be the two on the south side of that intersection, that south side woods. That gives you some leverage, you give your bids, you receive the Harriet's Road bid, you receive the added for doing the two on the north side of the intersection, and how much more it costs you to do it on the south side. So it gives you some flexibility, and we'll do the two on the north side of that intersection by the bid.
So the motion tonight is to?
Just go for bids.
Just go for the bids? But will it come back to us to tell us exactly what the bid is permitted on itself?
Yes, sir, you will have to award the bid. You will have to do that.
Well, like Miss Skaggs was saying, the original bid, I know I did say something about the sidewalks that are in front of, being remarkable, it's in bad shape. If there's any way that we can take a look at it, if there's something else that we can do, like, you know, take a good strong look to see if there's any way we can get something done in that area?
I don't know, if the risk ain't been low enough, if you have a little extra funds available, I'm not sure at this point in time whether we could change the project. We don't have to do that.
Well, the engineer can tell you just about how far you can stretch that money. They would have the idea that, I mean, even if you want to put a foot more concrete, they're going to have the idea about how much money that's going to cost, and the bidder is going to tell them, we can do it for this much, so the bidder will work with, or the contractor will work with the engineer to define how much money things cost.
It's possible, I mean, it's, I wouldn't expect a whole lot, but you might get a little bit of sidewalk there on Commerce Street.
So it looks pretty bad if we didn't take a closer look at that, you're going to do a light job on the concrete and everything else, dress out.
You know, that ramp down there on that side, that going south on the right, on the north side there woods, even if you were to have a little lane left over, and you could extend off that ramp and come back towards Lavo, where you're already doing some work, that might be the cheapest way to have.
I'm just saying, if we can do something, beautify it wherever we're going to be, it would be all time, there's something we can do.
Yeah, we'll have to see what the bids come in.
When does this, this grant cover for application again?
We have a two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen cycle that's going on now.
Okay, so are we eligible to apply for that for another part of the?
We have to, we have to look at the details. Each council of governments has their own criteria, and sometimes when you have a grant in one cycle, you have to wait two cycles to be, you know, to have enough points to get another grant, so we really have to look at.
And see.
Yeah, what you've, where you've been scored, but we can look at that, absolutely. Who would you like for me to get back with? Would you like for me to get back with?
Yeah, get back with.
Okay, I will.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Seeing other discussion, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. So you have some other questions for us, or some other information?
I think we're good to go, unless you have any other questions for me?
Be careful going back, she has to drive back to Thailand.
I have to draw off business cards for any of you. If you have any questions, I will be your point of contact for now on with this particular project. You know, you have a lot of projects going on, and there's a lot to keep up with, but I'll be your point of contact on this, Ginger Hoffman, so if you need anything, please call me anytime, okay?
Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, number nine?
Discussing, take appropriate action if necessary for something, agree on airport lease, and this called by the airport hangar lease. Mr. Roberts, Tim, and I think John are here, would like to discuss that.
You can forward, please.
Your city attorney did draw up a lease assumption for consideration, still any here, but just to bring you, Mr. David Tinsley, the hangar lease, he's received, John has been asked, the family's wife used the hangar, that Tinsley had a lease, and they would like to continue that, I think it's about a two-year lease, that on this?
I thought it was around three years, but whatever, whatever the case is.
I'm sorry, is there a good number?
No, 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 I think you, you said everything needed, I would just like to assume the lease that the Tinsley estate now has, so it's the, it's the big, the big hangar that's there, there's some other teen hangars, but it's that, it's that main hangar.
And as I understand it, our attorney has looked at this, says it's fine and it's okay for us to do it?
Yes, ma'am, he actually grew up this lease assumption.
Very good. What is the wishes of council?
May I?
Okay, excuse me, I'd like to, okay. Okay, we hope you understand, and it has been seconded. Any further questions?
I just want to know how long was the lease? I see lease termination date, how long could it go?
Five years, what I have to do.
And it's real.
Seeing no further discussion, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, John. Number eleven?
Number ten, tell that here.
Ten, well, yes. I was looking at ten, I said, okay, number ten?
Here, project update report from MRB Gray Engineers, Mr. Allen Phillips is here for your agreement. Gil has another city I think we have to deal with tonight, good message.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
Philippis with MRB Gray. Before I get started, I've got some handouts. Ms. Neva, can you pass them over, please? So just an update on the ECWAG, that's the water treatment plant project. We've done our evaluation, did a detailed evaluation of all the issues out there at the plant, mechanical, electrical, et cetera, and sifted those through cost analysis and so forth, and came up with the way, the best way to spend that money, and we developed some plans and specifications, and we recently met earlier this last week with TCQ and about how to present those and get those approved, so we are about to present those to the TCQ formally in terms of plans and specifications for approval, and they have up to sixty days to review that before we can put that project out to bid. So that's where we are on that. Right now, we have a sludge hauling facility, that's what you see in the color photo, they are mucking out those basins that are full of sludge. As soon as we've got that done, then they'll be able to install the new membranes that we've, that the city's ordered and that are on location. So all that's coming together, I just want you to know that we're making good progress on that water plant. I think we're on track to getting the thing running well. As far as the drainage project, we've developed some citywide maps, I know that Gil has been involved with some of you in reviewing the issues. Thursday, our professionals will be out on site to give it a very close look, and so we're moving forward in making that happen as well. We're working with Lampard Associates to file for some grant funding through FEMA, so all of that is coming together, so I just want you to know that's in motion. As far as the dam project, that's D-A-M project, be clear about that. I think that our contract is before you this evening, but we are working with TCQ as well on that, just preliminarily, reviewing the safety inspection reports, and I know the staff has begun to clear vegetation from the new lake, dam crest, as well as the roadway at the base of the dam. So that's just an update, I think we're going to, about to start full bore on the dam project, and just as soon as we get that contract approved, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, do you have any questions for me?
See, did you do, are you going to do number eleven, or did you just do number eleven?
No, that's me.
That's you, that's going to do, okay.
Do you need me, do you need for me to stay for number eleven?
It's going to take a minute.
Okay.
Okay.
You have anything? Okay.
I just got one question. On your, the machine that you guys use to clean that sludge out there at the plant?
Yes, sir.
Was that a contract?
Yes.
Contract you're doing?
That is a contract.
The truck that we have is almost identical to this, wouldn't it help out, what's your next sludge jet?
No.
What do you guys?
No, the reason being, I spent five years hours out there, the reason being, that system is hooked up, they have a water back that's in there, it's a water jet, that stuff has to be broken loose from those center beams, those center wiers, and they're using that, that particular truck to set up to do that. And to be honest, they're a lot further in the schedule than what they had planned to be at this point in time. The folks at the, our folks at the plant have really helped them out a great deal, and we've changed the cycles from running some of our control processes out there with the water, so what that's allowed us to do is have access. So what that's allowed us to do is have access to the, to the neutralization basin. Because keep in mind, if, if you don't know, that basin fills up constantly with water from the chemical wash. I mean, every time that runs a cycle, thousands and thousands of gallons run through there. So basically, what we've been able to do is to alter that schedule without creating any problems, but it's given them time. Of course, the plant's not making any water during that, during part of that time. So we fill up everything, shut that part down, they work very hard, everybody works together, they get in there, they clean that, and it's my understanding that we're gonna be ready for containment unit, a closed containment unit's gonna go in there tomorrow and see exactly what else we have to do to clean out the corners and where exactly we are. Because keep in mind, that neutralization basin, you have two, two points of entry and they're, they're, they're not very big, you go down, concrete covers everything else and there are like baffles inside and all this sludge is down in those baffles, so they're gonna go in and, and see what they have to do to, to clean that out in the corners and jet that out. But it takes special people, special equipment because it's very easy to die down there with conditions that, that if you're not very careful. But I, I'm, I'm well pleased with, with what they've done. Now, they're gonna be out later, we're doing the neutralization basin first, but they're gonna be out later to do the feed basin. That's the one that is just past the clarifiers, if you've been out there, saw the big clarifiers and there, and there's that, that big concrete trough that's real big in front of it, it's about twenty-two feet deep, I believe. They're gonna do that, planning on doing that Saturday and we're, that's the time, we're gonna do it at the time, it's the least amount of water usage for the city. But they're gonna have several trucks out there and we don't have to fight the water. We take it out once instead of having to take it out many times with the neutralization basin.
Well, the only reason why I asked that, just wanted to, some way that, if we was working with them, we'd save some money, if there was no way that we can get in and do it yet.
No, I, I think with the closed access that it is and the conditions that are with the neutralization basin, I think would be in the way. And I don't want to slow them down at what they charge. So I, I think...
So in the future, we would have to continually get them, there's no way that...
No, I think in the future, what we need to do, once we get it licked, is we should be able to keep that on a cycle ourselves with, with our equipment.
That's what I was kind of thinking.
But it, it just had gotten too far, it hadn't been done since the plant was built and eighteen, twenty-foot of sludge is, you know, if they've been doing it a little bit every year, not a problem, but, but they haven't. And I think this is probably a good time, and I hate to hold you up, but I've spent quite a few hours going over all the records for the water plant. What we wanted to do is do an investigation and see why our plant failed last year. And we looked very closely at what the engineers had done and what the contractor had done. And I will tell you that what I have found is we were, the water plant created its own problem. When Coke and I have the plants, and I've seen those, I've been to the plant, saw exactly where the, where the feed turbidity meter was, the feed line was, we've seen that, and I think Mr. Gilbert's seen it. It was there and if it had been left alone, it would have shut off the plant, we would have saved all the filters, or the majority of them, and we would have not gone through what we went through last Thanksgiving. But somewhere along that cycle, about twelve to sixteen months after that plant was built, somebody decided to take out the automatic metering and they took out this, this alarm system. And this alarm system was hooked into the SCADA. So an alarm would go off every time they had a problem. And I can't prove it, but I would probably say the alarms kept shutting down the system, they didn't understand the system, and how do you do it? Tear it up and you take care of it, but there is no, Coke did a good job. And when I talked to the engineers, the design engineers in Massachusetts, they, oh yeah, you need to go look here, you need to go there, it's just, okay. And then I talked to the actual people that did the work here on this plant and they told me that it had been disconnected. So anyway...
So are we going, are you, are the plans to put those turbidity meters back in? Are we, I believe that's been done.
No, no, that, that hasn't been done yet, but we're gonna do that before we change the filters. We want, we want to clear the, the feed basin first and as soon as that feed basin is cleared, sometime in that, that timeframe, we're gonna tap that main line inside, put that in and tie that into SCADA. And I have the plans, the diagrams for the original and I have the diagrams we're gonna use for the new patch to tie in with Coke. And we've got a, I've got an email from Andrew Scott that says, when can we come to do the computer, to do the software update to make the system work? So that will prevent this ever from happening again in the future.
Well, I want to thank you for all the work you've been doing out there and the research and digging through those boxes and things, that's...
Did you mean the, she, I've been down several times, I don't know if you can get in, I just think it's got a special codes or something at the gate? How, how do you get in there? I know you can just let anybody in there. I've been down several times, wanna go in and just...
Go ahead and call the plant, we can call the plant and they'll, they'll...
Let you come out to the...
Yeah, I've been there, is it a code to call?
No, they're, you call them yourself, I'm just...
I have a question. As you're going through all that, are we making sure that our manual is being constructed to match it with pieces of equipment?
That, that is pretty much done now. Yes, it is, that's, that's pretty much done.
I didn't ask to look at the books when I was...
They, they have just about finished their processes and have, in other words, there's something there that tells them how to do it.
Yeah, like the wheels, the whistles are getting in, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, that is in work. I'm gonna tell you, the folks out there have done a lot of work, a good job, and I, I'm real proud of, of all those folks out there.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Porter?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Alan?
Thank you very much.
Do number eleven?
Uh, I think I can, uh, engineering services contract, Mr. Murray Green for the, the project.
Me too.
I would recommend, uh, I think it's for the engineering services contract, this is on our, this is the same project that our project three items were concerned.
Is the wish of the council?
I mean, we approve the contract about him on gray. I'm grateful I'm on and they have some...
Motion has been made. Is there a second, a second amendment? Motion has been made and it has been settled. Is there further discussion? Same round, will you call for the vote?
Councilmember Moren?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton and Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Number thirteen?
Discuss and take appropriate action if necessary on the county's agreement with Falls County for the mowing of the New Marlin Dam. Mayor, I met with the county commissioners before a couple weeks ago and also had the Earl with the load mandate for the county sometime before that to discuss getting some assistance with the mowing of the steep slope on the dam. We don't have anything we can work that slope with, we've done the crest and we've done the base. They have a boom mower and so they, we can approve in a local agreement, they will consider it at their next meeting, which I think they moved it to the twenty-seventh of December after Christmas. So if you can approve this, I will take it to Kennedy with four houses that they can have on there to chip them on the twenty-seventh. And then the Earl will try to get his boom mower out there. I think if they, if they can, if they can do that slope in about one day, of course, I know weather conditions is gonna be a factor too, you want to get that tractor back in there and follow, it gets a little wet, but we certainly need to, to get that slope mowed and they have the equipment to do it.
What is the wish of the council?
Mayor, make a recommendation, we approve the interlocal agreement up with Falls County for the mowing of the New Marlin Dam.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and been settled. Further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to get a, in a local agreement to get these ditches open down here that I've been trying to get for eight years and nobody's had a right concern in this. I see we have learned how to write an interlocal agreement and I'd like to get one for, to get some of this water off, off South Marlin down here. Because they told me you didn't know how to write it, but if possible, I'd sure like to get one for South, to get this water. Sure appreciate it.
What is the motion on the interlocal agreement with Falls County? Motion's been made and been settled. Will you call for the vote?
I just had a little something I forgot to mention before you go ahead and vote, just while we're there, we just kind of talked with Reverend Green, which has already written into that business with the interlocal agreement. Be a good time while they're kind of helping us in the city and he's, he's been waiting on that for, for a little while. And so that interlocal agreement, if you could just kind of mention it to him, he'll, he'll know exactly what we need to do.
They had become like they're someone like discussions and I think with, with Commissioner Green, but I think the judge had said something about, y'all had discussions about having an interlocal agreement, but we never came through.
That's right.
That's where I'm kind of...
That's right.
That's where, you know, I may need some input from y'all on what you were talking in there as far as interlocal, but I know they are doing some work every day, every day on South Bennett and assisting with some, that's by Kennedy too.
Well, I spoke, Reverend Green spoke with me and he's, he asked if the cap, that the city go ahead and clean on Bernard Street, he had already done his work since he didn't get an interlocal agreement. He had done his work down on Bernard to let that water out of there and he needs a, and the city needs to go in now and open up the ditches, he's done his work on...
I've been in it, yeah.
Yeah.
And yes, I'm aware of that. I talked to Earl yesterday.
He said he had spoken with you, comes such a concern in that.
Has a real concern with that because we, we had, people have, what I dog pound and we drug our feet on it and we lost that. So I don't want to lose that interlocal agreement chance that we have with that county. I know that's kind of indirectly what we have here, while he got the hand there, I think we need to try to see if we can take advantage of it.
Okay. The motion before us is on interlocal agreement with Falls County for the mowing of the Marlin Dam. We have a motion, we have a second, I'll be ready to vote. Okay.
Can you get a vote?
Will you call? Yes, Mr. Porter made the motion and Mr. Erskine seconded.
Councilmember Moren?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Skaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Proton and Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Number fourteen, please.
fourteen, discuss and take appropriate action if necessary on proposed employee buyback program. If you have any type of draft that keep the even put together for your review, chief?
Just a question. Is this a buyback program that, that Mario was working together with the chief of police?
We had sent, did you send the draft to the line?
The city secretary sent the draft of a buyback program to Mr. Dixon.
Have we gotten anything back from him?
I'm not certain if we have.
At this point in time, if we get a good review by the city attorney, yeah, I think it's a good idea to discuss it though, while we've got it on the agenda and in front of us, at least the draft is...
Oh, Gene?
Okay, what you guys should have in front of you is a buyback program. In the buyback program, we have a table of contents, which includes the introduction, the first set of policies that cover qualification chart for probationary officers and qualifications for probationary officers, non-provocationary officers and qualifications for the non-provocationary officers, administration qualifications and so on and so forth. If you look at the second area of the policy, it also covers forms and mandates and purchasing qualified equipment, purchasing qualified weapons, payroll deductions, collection and termination. And we also, if you continue on through this, through the first page, it also lists you know about the buyback program process, following request form, approval process, completing a purchase order, receiving purchase and finalizing paperwork. When we last talked about the buyback program, we can have all the, the details in front of us and, uh, I take heed to a lot of things you guys are saying in regards to the weapons and things of that nature. So there's an area in which you guys would like for us to go over in the buyback program, from the table of contents, we can go over, because there's a variety of different factors in regards to the buyback program. I have three new officers that's sitting in the back as well, they just recently joined the Marlin Police Department and this is kind of like a fitting meeting for them to come to.
Would you introduce them?
Yes. Lieutenant Colazo, that's Officer Sergio Colazo, Officer Raymond Lazard, and Officer Gregory Pessel. Now, I can tell you a few things about him, just, and I'm trying to be brief because I'm, I like what I do when I pick people. Sergio is gonna leave, he's gone January second, he's gone to the, he's gonna go to the DA's office. He turned in one report and I liked the report that he turned in so much that they have requested for him to put in the application to be the new investigator for Falls County. So he will be the new investigator. He's, he hasn't been here in more than a month yet. Lazard, he's already making waves, he's the tallest person on the police, on the police board, we need some hype, so. He's already making waves. And of course, Miss Pessel, she's only twenty-one years of age, but she already has inspiration to join the FBI.
So, is that ready?
We're gonna work it out.
Chief said it's a special reason why he's leaving us, going to the DA office.
It is good.
We gotta lose a good one.
We need the good ones over here.
I know, but we're not losing them, we're not losing them, what we're gaining is a partner.
But he's going over there.
I know, but a lot of, I know, but a lot of the crimes that take place...
But they can go find somebody else.
I know, but a lot, a lot of the crimes that take place in the city of Marlin, they, they started off somewhere else and it just branched off, and it just branched off over here. So if we can, if we, if we have somebody that we can partner in on a daily basis that came from us and quite so, we'll be able to continue on that friendship and probably more likely build a legacy.
Come up with what we need to do to keep the people like that, I say.
Buyback programs and, and, and funding. Buyback programs and funding. The buyback program is essentially to help new officers and veteran officers. Like say, for instance, if we, we lose a flashlight, some of those flashlights that we carry, they cost a hundred and thirty-five dollars. So when you lose that flashlight and payday is about a week and a half away, you don't have the money to go out there and immediately get a flashlight. And that's, that's what the buyback program would help us with. Also, apparently boots that I have on a boots man, a person with the buyback program. Now, we had this program in place, but after the, after the meeting in September, the buyback program was gone. So it's good in a way that it was taken away because we didn't have any... So it's good in a way that it was taken away because we didn't have any policy written behind it. So now we look at, we have policy written behind it. If there is anything that we need to change, since we haven't had that discussion with Mike Dixon, or we haven't had feedback with Mike Dixon, this would be a good time for us to change whatever we need to change.
I have a question, maybe I misunderstood during your presentation at the last meeting, but the fine thing was it was for new officers needing equipment. And it was five hundred dollars. And I see on page three, you've got not just new officers and patrol officers, protective sergeants and chief of police, all increasing amounts. And I'm wondering, does that flashlight count a few more if there's a patrol officer?
Now, that flashlight's got the same amount.
I was wondering, I mean, the same, basically the same equipment to do police work. What is it that you require a patrol officer, that's going to cost? I'm looking for some justification for the five dollars versus five hundred dollars.
Well, there's plenty of things that I, that I may, I may need that is different from what a patrol officer may need. I mean, we would have to go all the way into the job descriptions. The job, the job description for patrol officers nowhere meets the job description for chief of police.
Well, what equipment that you have that are not have that you have.
Well, what I, what I do have is a laptop, a city person's laptop. But if that laptop was to go down, and I would need a person's laptop, patrol officers not, they're not ones who are privileged to have a laptop. They don't need it.
They've got them in their vehicles, so.
Yes. And they can, they can take that laptop out, and they can take pictures and...
They're going in their vehicle?
What I do, I, I work at home, and when I'm, when I'm gone and visiting and at different classes, I'm using this laptop as well.
That's your personal one?
No, it's not my personal laptop.
Okay, how's that related to this?
It relates to it because if that lap, if that laptop was to break, or if the laptop that I was using, which was my own personal laptop that broke, and what, they didn't get replaced. So it kind of, it kind of relates in a sense.
Is it your laptop or your city's laptop?
No, when I first started working, I was using my own personal laptop, and that's what led to us getting laptops through the city. Now we have three laptops, so sergeants won't have to get called back into work when we have to do reports. We have cops sitting on these laptops now, so the sergeants can do work at home, detectives can do work at home. Prevents overtime and things of that nature.
So, so laptops are not a budgeted item for your own work, then?
No.
Do not budget at all?
We're budgeting for supplies, and what I, what I did was to assist us in a sense with these laptops. What I, what I did was I required for us to purchase three of them. When we purchased these three laptops, we had cops sitting put on the laptop. So myself, when I'm out traveling about, if I'm called by DA's office in regards to a case, I can look up whether I'm in, at San Houston State or Prairie View or wherever I'm at, handling chief, means I can take the time out to look up these cases on laptop.
My question is, would it be, is it a good idea to, for these laptops with all that information on it, to not belong to the city?
They belong to the city.
Okay, so...
But what I'm saying is, when I first started, the laptop that I started with was my own laptop. I was going on my own laptop, and when my own laptop crashed, there was no way for me to purchase that, purchase another laptop.
Okay, so I understand that. Well, I would expect we look at it differently. This buyback program, when you came last time, it was for new officers, old officers, to buy personal equipment that they needed to do the job. And when you first started, you used your personal laptop, but now you're not, you're using your personal laptop. So I, I just want you to clarify, and I think that's what he's asking. Why would the laptop be included in the buyback program?
No, I was just giving a laptop as an example. The laptop wouldn't be included in the program because now the city has purchased laptops for us to use for what I, um, let me give you a better example.
Yeah, I'm used to it. Use a real...
One, one of my new officers just purchased her own case. Essentially, a vest costs seven hundred and fifty dollars. The buyback program itself does not allow for a new officer to purchase that vest at seven hundred and fifty dollars because we have to, we have to weigh in the fact that, okay, this is a new person. What if they come in, two weeks later they quit? We're, we're stuck paying for a vest that neither of the officers may be able to fit. So there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different examples in a, in a buyback program. Like say, for instance, okay, probationary officer, probationary, and probationary employees are subject to different rules and qualifications. A probationary employee is an, is an employee that has been employed by the city of Marlin for less than ninety days. During the ninety-day probationary period, if a probationary employee chooses to utilize the buyback program to purchase equipment, then they must sign for the deduction to be paid back through the program over the next two pay periods. Reason why, reason being is because what, what, I don't want the city to have to incur a loss if this individual is quit. So if they was to go out and purchase one of these vests that cost seven hundred and fifty bucks, and they're only allowed to purchase five hundred dollars worth, uh, worth of equipment through the buyback program, we're already setting the bar to where if you can't, if you can't exceed five hundred dollars, you're not going to be able to purchase the vest anyway. So we're going to be able to assist them in a different area, because let's just say this new officer has to purchase a vest, a Sam Brown, which is the utility belt, and that's how they equip everything that comes with the belt. The flashlight, handcuffs, handcuff key, things of that nature. That belt along can range in between a hundred, uh, from one hundred to a hundred and fifty bucks, depends on how big you are.
I don't think there's a problem with being able to buy equipment. It's just that, like you were saying, from last time, that was five hundred dollars. And I'm sure you've gone back with your drawing board discussed that to come up with a hood, and seven fifty, that allows a little extra room. And so you were saying what's different with the chief helping buy it? That's, that's what I heard his question for.
The best, the best way I can explain it is this is just, patrol officer is not required to do the same things that a detective is required to do. A detective is not required to do the same things that a sergeant is required to do.
That wasn't an issue in the last...
I know, but, but what I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain the best way I can to understand. The best, the best way I can explain this is, a patrol officer has minimum requirements. So they don't, they don't, they don't have to have the same amount of equipment as a detective may have to have. Like, say for instance, if a detective is sitting out overnight, and they're watching his house, a patrol officer is not required to have binoculars and things of that nature. A patrol officer is not required to have different type of recording devices, but detectives may need these different recording, recording devices that the city doesn't provide. So in that, so in that case, in order for them, in order for them to do their job adequately, the buyback program can assist them with person their own, their own recorder, their own tape recorder. We sit down, we interview people all the time. We have an interview room that has not been up since, for about four years.
So your short answer is that when you went back to really put a real program together, you took into consideration the other needs?
Exactly.
Okay.
Chief, I just want to ask this question, might be a little silly. Does the police department have any equipment? I want to know.
We got, we got good run of the horse, we have cops. I mean, we, we, we have equipment.
But there are things that you actually need.
Exactly.
Okay, that answered it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question, I, because I'm for the buyback program, however, I'd like to tie that in with a couple of things. I do thank the interim city manager for asking clarification on the amounts. I would hope that a sergeant or a detective wouldn't need to spend that much. That would be my personal hope. I can understand a new officer having nothing would, would require that. But I guess what really bothers me is detectives shouldn't be buying recording equipment. Detectives shouldn't be buying binoculars, these things, i- if it's things that are set equipment. There's certain equipment that the city should be furnishing. And I think what we probably need to do is, the police department needs to start working on it now, your list of requirements. We've got some grant periods opening up here shortly. We need to look at putting in some grants through HOCO, and let's say, let's get those recording devices or other, whatever we need, because I don't know what it is, but we, we need to start thinking about that and doing that now. Somebody needs to start listing that, and we need to start working that here real quick, because I don't think an officer should have to go out and do those. Yeah, you got to, you need to own your own pistol because you need to know how to shoot it. You need your own Sam Brown, you need your own handcuffs. I, I got all of that, and I agree with all of that. Some of this stuff, the city needs to furnish.
Like what our, what our body warmer cameras. We purchased the body warmer cameras through the buyback program. We purchased the son of recorders. Some of them, they range in between seventy bucks, we purchased those on our own. There's a lot of, lot of small items that, that we need. We need them. I mean, if we, if we need to find out who's selling the drugs where, sometimes we're, we're not going to be able to sit out there because they're going to notice us. They're going to recognize us as a vehicle. So we, we need some type of recording device that's not sending off a signal that, hey, they over there in that corner. That, that's, that's what they have right there, so let's, let's stop, wait till you can get back started.
I think it's funny as well that the city should be buying that for you. Not that you don't need it, but that the city should be buying it. Uh, Mr. Porter, you through?
I have no heartburn with this other than I am a little concerned about the amounts, but...
And, and another, another factor about the amounts is about how much you can pay back too. Like if you can afford to pay this amount back, then let's, let's open it up for them a little bit, because the more equipment that they go out there and purchase on their own, nine times out of ten, if you got to buy it yourself, you're going to treat it a lot better than somebody else give it to you. And that's another reason why those purchase ranges are different. Not only because they have more responsibility, but also due to the fact they get paid more, that they have enough money to pay it back.
Mr. Erskine, do you?
No, I just, like, Mr. Porter, I was looking sort of about the total amount that's expended. Uh, I, I agree that the officer coming over or doesn't have a job, they can buy all the equipment with. And to first that, we do need to get to take aware of that, but also at the same time, we need to take inventory of what we do, who we went to, how the officer spent it, what he spent for, and if you resign for any period of time, recovery of certain equipment back to the city again. City actually is not a bank, it, it's, it's a citizens' program. But this is something I think we need to do because it's out there and it, it's a necessity that you have this equipment, and it's safety factor. It's definitely safety factor, Chief. But we need to be aware of the, the money that we're expending, the amount that we're expending on that.
And there, there is other terms and conditions in regards to buyback program. This is not just the city giving an employee money, and we're jumping for joy because the reason why we're going to jump for joy is because we have the equipment that we need. But when you look at the, some of these, some of these terms in regards to the buyback program, like the forms and mandates, the payroll deduction and things of that nature, if a, if a employee is terminated, then at that point, if they still have a buyback program, equipment in process, all that equipment is taken back from them until that obligation is fulfilled. They have thirty days to fulfill that obligation. If they can't fulfill that obligation within thirty days, then that, that property is considered to be forfeited to the city. It don't matter how much money they paid to it. If you took out seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of buyback program stuff, you've only paid two hundred and fifty dollars to it, your last check is not enough for you to cover the total amount, then at that time, that equipment is collected back. And that's an agreement that, that they increment before they, before they're even able to purchase the equipment. And that's just a, that's just a save the cur, the, uh, the city by curious liability as well as, uh, like financial loss.
Mr. Moran, do you have?
Okay, like Mr. Carasso, he's returning all his back, and you know, if he hadn't finished paying for it, he's going to return it all back and, you know.
Nobody has utilized the buyback program as yet.
Yes, sir, but I mean, I'm just, as an example, they would, like you said, they would return it back. It wouldn't let, it wouldn't go unless they could pay it all back.
Yes, but until, until they have fulfilled their obligation with the city, and they only have thirty days, because the city shouldn't, shouldn't have to wait sixty, ninety, a hundred, twenty days, seven, eight extensions, extensions to it, and not, we're not going to go through any of that. Got thirty days to pay it back, pay it back in thirty days. At that point, this equipment is forfeited to the city. Not only do we have equipment to give to somebody else that we have to hire, but we also have, we also don't have to utilize the buyback program for that type of equipment. Now, there's other things that I'm trying to do too, in regards to a lot of the weapons that we have. Still have to be a destruction order for them. I'm trying to find a way for us to strengthen our, our armory to where we don't even have the buy guns.
Oh, Chief, I'd like to ask you another question this time. Will you provide, will you present to the council members a list of equipment that the officer needs and the cost provided, so we know what we look at?
It's gonna, it's gonna be real big though, because...
We need a list of equipment that we're providing. And according to the cost of the equipment that we are providing, so we have some idea of where the money is, where the money going, what it being spent for.
Yeah, so you're talking about when the, when the officer, that's, that's a part of the buyback program. They have to, they have to provide us a list. We're gonna, we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do accurate, we're gonna keep a consistent schedule in regards to checking their equipment, make sure that the equipment is, is in good hands and is well maintained properly. Now, when, once they purchase the equipment, it is not completely theirs until the, until the obligation is fulfilled. So that equip, that equipment will continue to go through service checks. We're gonna continue to make sure that all of that is, is done adequately. I, I don't, I don't, I don't plan on the city having to endure any loss. When I do things, I try to do it, I try to do it as, as sound as I can. And with this, with this program, it's not a page long for a reason. It's not a page long for a reason, because each concern that you guys brought up in the last meeting, I did my best to address it.
Mr. Anderson, you can say.
Yes. I'm kind of getting confused a little bit here. First thing, I felt like we're supposed to be putting a contract together for you guys to be able to do this, number one. The next thing is, you have gotten in there and you figured out what you really need to do to really make a good contractor to do it as well, right?
Right.
Okay, so the question about what you're going to do is what we're going to put on contract that we're going to sign to have in place for this unit, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a lot of discussions about something else to be, I mean, we're going to be getting a contract together and letting the attorney himself take a look at it, right? So we're just getting the input to give to you to put the thing together, so we can approve what you have, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, see, I'm kind of confusing me sitting here, wondering about what you're going to do. What we're going to do is what you put on paper to bring to us, and we approve what we've asked you to go do. And from the time that you've been back there, you recognize from the last time that you was here, that is, you need to put more than what you was saying on this paper. That, okay, I, now I think I'm where I need to be.
Yes, sir.
But we waste a lot of time talking around about what you're going to do and where the money going to come. You still got to get a contract for us to bring in here to approve.
Yes, sir.
Because the attorney himself hadn't even looked at what you got on paper. Am I right?
You're right.
Okay, so somebody, somebody cleaned it up.
Yeah, I thought it was important just to work out some big...
Yeah, that's what we put...
...in the attorney's time on the whole...
That's what I think we're supposed to be doing, not trying to beat up on each other. We're just trying to figure out, okay, what are we going to put on this paper to be approved? Right? Okay, so the contract ain't been written, so why are we telling what he need?
That's right, this is his draft. That's right, this is his draft.
That's just a draft that we're supposedly working on to approve for the city.
So I guess at this point, it's, it's exactly the point you're making, if y'all had any thoughts that you wanna give to the chief.
Give it to the chief.
Let's go ahead and in front of all of us now and say what those changes are, so that we can take this back to make sure that the attorney sees it.
Thanks, sir.
Any suggestions that y'all have, add it to you, so that we don't have to go back to the attorney twice. So, got any specific that you can agree on on this, or if you wanna send it as is?
All of y'all need to speak one time. I think we need to let the chief handle this and give it to the attorney. He has heard the comments from all of us, and he just gave it to the attorney.
Yeah. Because the policy is being set in place here, and the attorney, certainly we couldn't vote anything without the attorney looking in. I wanna compliment you, know that you've done a good job, you're pulling together a lot of uh, of this, this. These are not easy to do, so uh, anyway, uh, then that's what we need to do. I think you can get with the attorney, back and forth, and then city manager, and I bet y'all can. There's been a lot of comments made here, and uh, and hopefully positive comments to take forthwith. So uh, that's what I don't think any more discussion is probably necessary.
One thing, two.
One thing, uh, when you're, when you're talking, I think the biggest thing was that five hundred to the increase. If you just explain why the increase, I think that's gonna be suffice for.
No, the reason?
Because we were stuck on five hundred, and then today is like, but that's why I asked, you assess yourself.
If y'all wanted to be five hundred across the board, then it'll be five hundred across the board. I just want everybody to be able to get the stuff that they need, so we can go out there and work.
I agree.
The only reason why-
Wasn't five hundred across the board before?
No, 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 it, it was, it, I don't, I don't know what the difference was.
Okay, so see-
But I, I put, I put, I put a dent in it, in regards to the money that we made.
And that's all you have to say, is that we re, uh, reassessed, and we are addressing all the other stuff that was started out. And when I come to you with a policy, this is what I agree. I, I think that's all you have to say, yeah.
Chief, I just, I just don't agree to let go of our policies.
I got a little, that, that's, I mean-
I know.
This, this, this is the real, he just, he just started to come on and I-
I know, we just got it, we should have kept it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Um, number fifteen?
Discussion taking appropriate actions, I'm sorry, to amend the penalty year, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, put into the person for war. This is something Scott talked to me a couple of weeks ago, uh, concerning uh, amending the water budget to replace a couple of uh, zero turners and mowers that y'all bought four or five years ago. But they were rather light duty, and he wanted to replace them with heavier duty commercial grade ones. I know that, I put together a little budget format, I didn't see one that y'all had to do to pass the budget amendment, so I put together a proposal was. Uh, moving some funds out of the equipment repair and equipment repair to obtain these two mowers. I know we have other issues going on with the water system and water plant. And I think Scott's initial attempt is to, to get the equipment that he needs, to do some mowing without any increase in budget. I think Mr. Porter may have something to contribute to this.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we table this. For the time being, until we have the opportunity to go over the budget. Because we're spending a great amount of money at the water plant, and we're having to move money around to do that. And everybody knows we're getting no money until we have the first of the year. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be committing money tonight when we need to pay these contractors out there. And I'm not talking about paying out of the grant. What I'm talking about, because the grant money, if you stop and look at it, it's gone. But this, back in the cleaning of the neutralization basin, the cleaning of the feedback, we're paying for that, the city's paying for that. So I, I don't wanna spend some money and commit money, move money around until we get that done. We can sit down and say, this is where we are. Maybe looking at finances next week, where we are with that, so.
So you're making a motion to table?
I'm making a motion to table.
Is there a second? Motion's been made to table? There is no discussion on table motion, so we call for the vote.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scaggs? Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Prothean Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item sixteen?
Discussion taking appropriate actions necessary for the sale of surplus equipment using renovation and then option service. There, I'm going to, I did, I tried to gather some information on some of your surplus equipment. I, I got a rough list, but I, I wanted a little bit more detail to actually, particularly vehicles, and I saw we had tiles on hand for these vehicles. But just this past Thursday, you've given the final, I found there, the bulk of the vehicles that I had identified were police cars that you had sitting down back. And I found that y'all had actually already approved the sale of those police cars a year and a half ago.
It's wrapped now.
So, I'm proposing that you table this until we get somebody in PD to go strip the decals off of them, get the uh, exempt license plates off of them, and the overheads and the equipment that doesn't need to be sold. Uh, so that we can sell. They've been sitting back there a year and a half now, and I can't see adding anything else to your, your plan of sale till I can see we get those though, or at least get the information we need off of them.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Moran?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Prothean?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And? Number seventeen?
Mayor, Sandra put together an agenda item on here. Discussion taking appropriate action necessary to consider options for roof replacement. Sandra got a number of things in a different building. Uh, primary concern today is this building here. Uh, we've got a few leaks in the building, and of course, your old library leak, we keep records. Uh, I, I think there's some evidence that the fire department group is leaking again. But as I said, my main first primary concern is this building here, where you have people working day in and day out. I don't want you to be like the post office and have a poor delivery about parking lot in there, you know. So I mean, it's, it's something to be, be concerned about. She had a proposal from Parsons Commercial, and a copy of you had there is on this building. And Johnson Roofing. Parsons Roofing, the proposal was for forty thousand, five hundred dollars. Johnson Roofing was twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and one for this building. One of the differences, I think Johnson Roofing was using their thermal plastic, the old things. Uh, and Parsons Commercial, and that was a six-to-nail diamond material. And uh, Parsons was quoting a forty-nail strength membrane, uh, which a Buick had, we can buy a, make it a PVC. The problem is money, as Doug mentioned a long ago, this is a real fund expenditure. You're gonna need to decide how you're gonna plan for this, uh, if you want to proceed with it. I think Sandra was gonna propose you take a bank loan to get the roof laid. I'm not too much in favor of that, I hate to uncover on that proposal, but if you wanna go ahead and do it, I think you have some other funds. That have a lot of funds in them, that you might be able to do an inter-fund loan. I wouldn't do it just as a transfer, but I would actually get the city attorney to write up a loan document that requires an interest payment, just like you would to the bank. Or use your own money, and tell them, uh, one of the ones that has some funds in his, they'll go down all the way back. But it's, I don't think it's something that the roof's gonna pay you in the long, that you have to make it a decision to buy. But it's something you really need to consider seriously about taking some kind of action in the near future for this building. If you wish, I can contact the city attorney to see about him drawing up some paperwork for an inter-fund type loan, or if you're ready to go through the bank process. I think Sandra included, uh, I say she did, I'm not sure, I thought, I saw, I saw a, some information on bank loans, like three percent or something like that. And not making a payment for a year.
Can, can you, you mentioned, you mentioned uh, hot funds. If, I can't remember what we did, but uh, can you, can you borrow from that and then repay it back legally? Or can you, uh, if you set up the hot, this building as the um, center for the hot funds? You know what I'm getting at, it's a, and then, then you could use, use those. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I, I, I think I do. Legally, at one time, we talked about moving the tourism center to here. There's a little space out in the hall, we could have some little kiosks, and we could have our maps and other things there. If we made that formal move, then we could allocate money based upon the percentage of use. That would help, that we could help do that, because that is legal. However, it's, we'd have to look at, look at the space and look at the percentage, and we'd have to actually do that. We just can't, same with the tourism center, we'd have to actually, we'd have to actually do that. And that is a, that's probably something we need to look at. We are behind on that process, that program anyway. We had hoped to have a building on Main Street by now, uh, we're just way behind, and with everything else happening, we just haven't had the opportunity to go work that. But uh, I, I think that is an option, and we need to look at it. And then if that was the case, then we could take money, a percentage of that, can't take all of it, you could take a percentage of that. And use that to uh, do the repair cost.
It'd be a very small percentage of it.
It'd be, it, it depends on how much space we allocate.
And, and you have to, you have to figure out whether moving and he, moving the uh, tourism center here, and all the, everything that's gonna cause, if it's gonna be worth it or not.
Okay, and, and that's it, but you're, it, it's a little bit more to it than space, because if you're allocating a phone number, which you'll have to, that's expenditure for that. I mean, the, the, the percentage is a little bit bigger than you think for the time you figure all the cost into that. So that is a possibility. I, I, I do like the, the inter-loan from ourselves better than I do going to the bank. We have, if we go to the bank and we get a debt service, then you gotta raise taxes, you gotta do the things that you have to do to legally pay back debt service. And I, you know, we're, we're, we're having to do that every time we turn around already, I'd rather not do that.
And, and that might be a consideration that Sandra had, the fact that there's a debt service and it's calculated differently in your effective tax rate calculation.
Well, that's, that's true.
Uh, you know, on, on my part, you'll lose that benefit, but you'll be getting the interest if you pay.
Obviously, the, this building is our main concern, uh, as far as the, I mean, we have to, we can't let this, this building go, I think.
Mr. Eric and I were up on the building here about, here last week or so. And we do have problems over on this, over on this side. There, you, it's, they're visible, you can, you can see it. I'm not saying that's where all the leaks are.
That one with the wire and straw?
But uh, that's, it, it's, it, it's just pretty bad.
And I did talk to the gentleman, like, there, there's nothing out there, there's something they can't work with.
Okay, but I, I had asked the interim city manager on Johnson's Roofing, they made a statement, satellite air conditioning, plumbing, electrical, except for it to be done by others. And I didn't know if they, we had to get somebody to move that stuff and then, then do the work or not. But evidently, they say they take care of everything, so that was a, a concern for me. My only concern is, we had the fire station done. Sandra's not correcting her figures on the early eighties, I'm sure it was probably done in the eighties. But it was also redone by Parsons in two thousand and four.
A flat on what?
The fire station was, was, was done by Parsons in two thousand and four. I'm just a little concerned, you get twelve years on a, on a roof, you know, I'm... So maybe we could look at a repair there instead of having to do the whole thing.
Definitely, you do it.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, we have another fire station. And some of the firemen have said they do seem to be in that fire station. So uh, you know, that is a consideration, if they are willing to move there. I think one of the problems they had was getting all of the big, getting that big, big truck they had, that they, they could um, they could work, work uh, work that out somewhere or another. So, I mean, that's one. The other thing I wanted to tell you was that on the old library, the American Legion really would like to lease that building from us, or use that building from us. And they're willing to do what the work that it needs to take to um, uh, repair it and, and you know, and I told them, I said, I think the roof's leaking. So uh, but that might be a really good place, I can't think of a better use for it than our veterans and the American-
We have the one America still over there.
Huh, but that's, and that is the issue, that's, uh, that's why I hadn't come up anymore, is 'cause all of that stuff is there. And would need to be moved over to the storage building over on Fawn Street, but you can't move it over there because the roof needs to be fixed on it. And uh, it needs to be done some work, I believe.
That building's dilapidated.
Yeah. So it's, you know, it's uh- Weird.
Like I say, my primary concern is this building where you have people working.
Yeah. I mean, you have to do this building, you've got people in it, and you've got, have water coming in, and mildew, and people working in there, and-
Carol actually, if it's raining hard, and it has to be a hard rain, and maybe a little wind blowing, but she actually puts garbage bags over a computer and gets it.
Who does that?
Carol. And you've got a water bucket up here in the lobby, if you have to notice.
Yeah, that's mildew. Mildew comes from that stuff.
Well, it drips in there, like it too.
Is there any way we can look into budget and find a solution there?
I think right now, we're pretty strapped in the budget.
Yeah, it's a financial balance is the problem.
Yeah, but we're just, until January, February, general fund wise, we just don't have any money.
But we have got to get this done by January?
No, no, I, I don't, I, I think we need to get it done, but I don't think we have to do it tomorrow.
So can we move to have this table till we can investigate and assess ourselves more?
Would y'all like to have a workshop? I mean, have you ever thought about workshops?
Oh, yes.
This once a month council meeting is very difficult to keep anything on any kind of a schedule. And, you know, I, I, boy, I talked about this the other week. If that's possible, then y'all are considering a routine workshop meeting to discuss some inter-meeting issues and proposals. A lot of this stuff, we work down in workshops and come back to you for action in a, in a council meeting later on. Uh, if, I think some of your, uh, discussion items could be more generally worded where you might take any action. But you can have a more open discussion.
What has happened in the past is, I think when we tried to do that, what we discussed is, we tried to do that. Slowly, business was creeping to that meeting. And we ended up having two council meetings.
Maybe needed, there's nothing wrong with that.
And that's not, I don't think that was effective or what we was meaning to do. So, I'm, I'm, I'm the first one to jump, says, yes, let's do a workshop. But I want to do, I want a non-official meeting.
Oh, we need to...
Just don't want an action item.
I want an action item.
What do you suggest? They get a table, isn't it?
On this item, uh, yeah, uh, but I hear some kind of guidance. Do y'all want me to get the city attorney to draw up some loan papers for him?
We don't have no loan, what are we gonna do, a loan or not?
But not, not a loan, I'm talking about a, a loan from ourselves, from the city. We have some allowances sitting out here that we can't use, but for certain items. Let's see what the legality is to borrow from that ourselves. So we're borrowing from ourselves. If we do it with a formal loan agreement and we pay back with interest...
Such as?
Then...
What are you, what are you referring to?
Well, he mentioned...
Hotel Hotel Tax.
He mentioned the hot funds.
There, that would, would cover this building. But I would strongly recommend that you get a, a, an agreement, a payment agreement, just like you would with the bank with, in loans. You would have to approve it as a council. And, and pay yourself interest and have an amortization scale scheduled. You're either gonna make monthly or quarterly payments from ten to five, back to Hotel Hotel Tax.
Is that the only one we have to be...
Instead of borrowing from the bank, buying the bank interest.
Okay, a moment.
Well, there's, there's...
Yeah.
We, we probably have one or two others we could look at. But I'd have to sit down and, and we, we need to sit down and talk and go through exactly. Because there, there are some other accounts that have money. That money's frozen for certain purposes. And, uh, you know, you just, if that need comes, you can't, you gotta, you gotta let it go. I mean, you can't, we can't say, oh, I've got it loaned out. I don't understand what I'm...
That's, that's what was my next.
Yeah, so how, what's kind of legality can we, I mean, I didn't know it was possible. We can borrow money that's dilapidated for something else?
Within some legal boundary. I don't think you could use any grandparents or grandpas. You couldn't do that. But where you have some proprietary funds that belong in the control of the city, you can do some inter-fund loans. A lot of cities will just say, oh, well, we'll prove a trick there, but it never gets backed for that. So if you formalize it with a loan agreement, it's gonna have an amortization schedule, a payment. It's gonna be paid just like in your debt, back like you paid on the bank.
The money's gone when you get it out of there, so if you need it for something else, it's gone.
Well, it's gonna be paid back, that's where you have this.
That's what, that's why we'd have to look and make sure that what we're, what we're borrowing from, it's not gonna have an immediate need, because that...
You got a need for it, we need it in everything after the water plant.
Okay, so why don't, why don't you, um, gather up all of that information and then we'll have a workshop in January after the, it'd have to be in January. This, this wouldn't work. And it'd have to be after our January meeting too. Yeah, so, um, if, if y'all are agree with it, then we'll look at the calendar. I don't have a calendar in front of me, but we can look at that and then send out some dates for you. Okay? Cause we've, we've got, one other thing we've got to do here that's gonna pick up some calendar too, so...
Yeah, there's a couple of things, you know, the city attorney can check off is the funds that we can use. If it's not that one, that thing. That's the one I felt like you had the least, uh, obligation coming up in the near future. Well, I think, uh, some of your other things, I don't think you could tell your grandparents. I will give it a damn. We'll get a workshop scheduled. I think there's a couple of other things we might be able to accomplish at that. And I think workshop, I'd like to just perhaps, if the city attorney were to take a place, maybe do your place for that, please.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, um, we are going to postpone the... Okay, we need a motion to postpone item, uh, agenda item number seventeen to, uh, a workshop if we determine later. Do we have a motion?
Take motion to postpone until sometime in January.
Is there something? Motion has been, has been made and seconded.
Question? I agree with what Mr. Porter said, until January, but we can't say we're gonna have a workshop on it until he finished what he's gotta go do with the attorney. So, so you can't just say you're gonna do that till he gets the information to see if we can do anything with it. I mean, I wanna go to workshop and we still don't know what the attorney's saying.
How about, I, I, I'll admit that to, postpone until we have the correct information from...
Get it.
Man, y'all, don't shake me up every night.
Mr. Porter, I'm gonna have a dumb question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Doesn't chamber, don't they get some of the hotel, motel money still or do we can get all of it now? That was a...
All the...
I wasn't sure that about them.
All comes to the city.
Okay, I couldn't remember, but I thought... Okay, uh, we call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Moren?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scaggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Erskine?
Yes.
Mayor Prothean Porter?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Who seconded that?
I agree.
You did. Okay. We, uh, y'all wanna take a, a short break or you wanna just keep going? Okay, five minutes.
And we, we do such...